Welcome everyone to the District Five Democratic County Council Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP. My name is Erica McDonald, co-president of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County, and we are pleased to present this opportunity for the voters of Baltimore County to meet the candidates and hear what they have to say about important issues facing our county. The League and the NAACP are nonprofit, nonpartisan political organizations. Neither organization supports nor opposes candidates for public office, and both do not support political parties. The League's mission is to encourage informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The NAACP seeks to assure that African-Americans as well as all citizens participate in our democracy as active and informed voters. A few housekeeping details before we begin. The forum this evening is a webinar, which means that audience members can submit questions to the hosts in the chat, but cannot post questions verbally or enable their video. During the forum, candidates will respond to questions, but this is not a debate, and time will not be provided for candidates to rebut each other's responses. Questions will not be specific to any candidate. Civility is expected, and candidates who behave disrespectfully, such as talking over other candidates, would be warned and may be muted or removed from the forum. Please note that no unauthorized recordings of this forum are permitted, as it is the content of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP, and may not be used without permission. A recording will be available after the forum from the League's YouTube channel, and will be sent to the candidates to provide links to. And with that, we are ready to begin. Stacy Morrison will be our timekeeper this evening. Our question facilitator is Nielsen Andrews, and our moderator tonight is Diane Ashenbrenner with the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County. Just give me a moment to pin our panelists, our candidates, and Diane. Just a moment. There we go. One more moment. Thank you for bearing with me. And with that, I'll turn it over to Diane. Thanks.
All right. The Baltimore County Council is the elected legislative body and is vested with all lawmaking power granted by the county charter and by the General Assembly of Maryland. Tonight, we will hear from the Democratic candidates for county council in District Five, Crystal Francis and Nick Johnson. The candidates will each make a two-minute opening statement, as well as a two-minute closing statement after the question and answer period. The order of the opening statements was determined by the alphabetical order of their last name. The closing statement will be in reversal order from the opening statement. The timekeeper will give a verbal 30-second warning, and then announce when the allotted time is up. After the opening statements, each of the candidates will have the opportunity to respond to questions. Candidates will not be allowed to give rebuttals. We will begin the questions with the ones developed by the League of Women Voters and the Randalls Town NAACP, followed by questions from the audience. We invite you to submit your questions via the chat, where they will be collected and vetted and passed to the moderator. Questions sent to the forum email before the forum have been collected and will not be monitored during the forum. Our screener will review questions for repetition and choose for variety. We may not have time to address all questions submitted by the audience. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to the question, and time limits will be strictly enforced. A timekeeper will alert the speaker when they have 30 seconds left and when time is up, at which time the speaker must stop speaking within 10 seconds. Our goal is to end the forum at 8:00 PM, and we appreciate everyone's help in achieving that goal. We will now have the two-minute opening statement from each of the candidates. Ms. Francis, you will go first.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters and NAACP for hosting this candidate forum. Thank you to Nick Johnson, my opponent, for also participating tonight, and most importantly, greetings Baltimore County voters. My name is Dr. Crystal Francis. I am a Democratic candidate for Baltimore County Council in the newly configured 5th District on the east side of Baltimore County. And as you know, representation matters. Women make up nearly 53% of the county's population. We have one African-American male on the council who is running for reelection uncontested, and the only woman on the council is retiring. I'm running to ensure that women in diverse communities have a voice in Baltimore County. Later, you will hear about my vision, plan, and expertise, but I am here asking for your vote and support, not just because I am a woman, but because I am capable, competent, and qualified, and I'm already doing the work. I believe that I am the strongest candidate in this race, based on my expertise. I have what it takes to be an effective council member, but I also know with your support that I am the right woman for the job and the right candidate to defeat the Republican incumbent. For the past decade, I have partnered with communities, neighborhoods, and legislators on the federal, state, and local level as an advocate, community representative, and public policy expert working to make strong schools, healthy communities, and safe neighborhoods a reality across Maryland and in Baltimore County. I invite you to visit my website
30 seconds.
www.CrystalFrancis.com to learn more about my campaign and to connect with me after tonight's forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Mr. Johnson, your opening statement.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, and Ms. Crystal Francis as well for joining us tonight. As stated, you know, I am running for the new District Five, and I am super excited to join this race. A little bit about my background. Growing up, my mom and dad both were addicted to drugs. My mom now is a substance abuse business owner with multiple locations throughout the county and the city. She has tons of rehab facilities, and me and my brothers were forced into foster care at one point in time. From there, my life kind of took a turn where I didn't know what I wanted to do with life. I joined lacrosse playing football, I mean, playing lacrosse in high school. My high school coach saw me doing something that I shouldn't have did, and he said, "I'm taking you on a ride along," like the Kevin Hart movie. And just having that mentor in my life totally changed my life. From there, I went on to become a Baltimore County police officer. For three and a half years, I worked in Dundalk and Woodlawn, so some of the worst of the worst. My wife is a Baltimore City police officer. She's been there now 19 years. I recently graduated on May 21st with my bachelor's in political science from UMG C. I am the first child in my family to do that, grandchild, sorry, and child of my parents. I believe that I'm the best candidate, because I'm the person that will meet people where they are. I'm the person that could connect with the everyday voter, the people that are necessarily on the streets, in the streets, in the communities.
30 seconds.
Thank you. I am not connected to any political powers that be, and I will be that independent voice. You can't go wrong if you vote for me on my website, it's nickjohnson.info. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We're going to stay with you for the first question. Question one: How do your skills and experience prepare you for the duties of the county council?
Absolutely. One of my baseball coaches, his name was Kenneth Harris. He was a city councilman in Baltimore City, and he tragically lost his life in 2008, I believe. That set me up for this position that I'm running for today. With my background in policing, my degree that I specifically studied in political science, like, this is all that I know. And just being that person that you could go to, that person that will be willing to listen to the people, the voters mainly, I am the candidate that will not vote on any bill that I have not brought to my people first, with exception to emergency legislation. I am a people person first and not a government person. I plan to work in government, but I don't want to work for government. That's who I am at my core, and that's who I believe. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
And that's who I believe voters should vote for, is me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Francis, the first question: How do your skills and experience prepare you for the duties of the county council?
Yeah, so as you mentioned earlier, the county council is the local legislative body for our area. They pass budgets, create programs, make appointments and confirmation to advisory boards, act on zoning, exercise oversight over county programs. And for the past 14 years, I have worked in the public policy space, researching, evaluating, shaping policy on the federal, state, local levels. I've served as a community representative on some of our local boards. I understand the importance of consensus building and developing solutions to problems in partnership and collaboration with communities to ensure that individuals who are closest to the problem have a seat at the table helping develop the solutions. As a statewide leader of a bipartisan volunteer nonprofit public policy group, I know the importance of finding common ground and establishing a common unity despite your political ideology. As a former employee of the Social Security Administration, I served as a program analyst, so I understand the importance of effective world-class constituent service and the need to localize access to resources to combat poverty, homelessness, access to health care. I am also a first-generation college student. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. I have a master's of science degree in homeland security management, and I earned my PhD in public policy and administration. And so I know how education can be leveraged as a vehicle for change. I know how education can be used to pull families out of poverty. I'm a daughter of two United States Army veterans, and so all my life, I've been in public service. I've been in public service. It's my first career. I'm going to continue to do the great work I did on the federal level here, on the local level in Baltimore County. So it'd be my privilege and honor if I could have the support of the voters in District Five.
Thank you, Ms. Francis, and we'll stay with you for the next question. What are your priorities for the Baltimore County budget? Given that the county will receive increased funding from local, state, and federal sources, what would be your spending priorities? And are there any particular areas of the county that you see as priorities for funds?
Yes, thank you so much for the question. So my priorities would focus on fully funding our immediate needs, investing in our future, and finding ways to create new revenue streams so that we can decrease the tax burden on our residents while inflation is high. I would prioritize spending on being smart in public safety. So I believe in a comprehensive, holistic, collaborative approach to public policy, so it's making sure that our first responders, that's police, fire, crisis response, have all the resources that they need to make use of state-of-the-art technology to be preventative and not reactive to our public safety concerns. I believe it's important that we provide our police department with access to a diverse group of employees, so making sure that there is funding available so our police department can recruit diverse officers. I think it's important to ensure that our fire stations have what they need to do their job. I also think it's important to strengthen our school system. A lot of residents knocking on doors, they are concerned about the overcrowding in the schools. We know that with the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, more funding is going to be coming down to the county. I want to be involved in ensuring that there's an equitable distribution of resources across the entire county, but specifically in areas primarily on the east side, who voters here feel like the east side has been left behind.
30 seconds.
Also want to ensure that we're improving the opportunity index, so making sure that we address our food deserts, improve access to education. We also can't forget climate change and making sure that we're doing all we can to decrease carbon footprint and making sure that we decrease the traffic here. Traffic is really bad over here on the Middle River, White Marsh side of town. And so one of the things I think was really smart in Towson was to implement that circulator. So I think it'd be great to bring that on this side of the county.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you for the question. I actually echo Ms. Francis on a lot of her ideas there, because they are strategic, smart ideas. First and foremost, public safety. We need to invest in our officers, because if nobody feels safe, how can anything else get done? Secondly, schools, educations, our kids mean the world to me. I have kids here that live with me, my own kids, and they go to Baltimore County schools. I could tell you, on this side of town, Benton Farm is completely overcrowded. Zoning regulation also. Where are those dollars being spent? We can't keep building houses, and we're not building schools, and we're not building parks and playgrounds for our kids to go. As far as the budget goes, I'm not voting on it without taking it to my constituents first, and I do agree with the county executive here. He's hosted town hall budget meetings, and that wasn't something that we've seen before. So I definitely like that. Whatever my people want, that's what I want to fight for. I believe that zoning regulation needs to be a top priority here, because it seems like it's just getting overcrowded. With the Lafarge property down the street off of Earl's Road, they're thinking about building a warehouse or a new community. And honestly, from going to these meetings, that's not what the community wants at all. And I got to agree with them there. We can't just put a warehouse there and the traffic and the congestion off of Campbell Boulevard. Connectivity as well. Mr. Stanley Vincent
30 seconds.
was tragically killed last year, because that route of 40 is just a walk-in highway. So making sure people have access to be able to walk safely and do things with their kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Johnson will stay with you for the next question, for question three. What do you see as the major educational issues of the county? How will you use your budgetary influence on the county council budget to address these issues?
I think this issue is twofold. We got teachers that don't feel appreciated. We got teachers that with the new houses comes the overcrowding, so now they're burdened as well. But then we need to also make sure we're pulling the resources for our children as well. While interviewing with the Teachers Association of Baltimore County, I was told about the parent teachers, where one teacher may call out, and that teacher, that parent teacher is specifically for kids with special needs or need a little bit extra attention. So if the teacher down the hallway calls out, then they pull that parent to another classroom, and now two sets of kids are suffering because of that. So as far as education goes, my budget influence would be to first, take care of our teachers. If our teachers can't be taken care of, how can they take care of our kids in the classroom? Secondly, we need to take care of our kids, being more engaged with parents, getting better after-school programs, and getting these parents to know that your kid can succeed. All we need you to do is help out a little bit. So what type of things can we put in the budget that could help parents be more active as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Francis, it's your turn to address the question.
Yes, so one of the things I think is very, very important, not only just the teacher morale is extremely important, but professors or instructors have talked about the COVID-19 male adjustment that happened with our students from COVID-19 till now. So it's really extremely important that teachers are receiving the training that they need to be able to understand how to navigate the challenges for students that did have that COVID-19 male adjustment when coming back into the classroom. So it's important that we ensure, not only that we're paying our teachers a fair, competitive, comprehensive wage with benefits, but also making sure that we're doing the same thing for our substitute teachers, because substitute teachers are feeling like that they are not having access to the same type of pay. We also need to make sure that we are providing resources beyond the classroom so that our teachers can focus on doing what they signed up to do, and that's teach. And so we want to make sure that we have more guidance counselors. We want to make sure that there are social workers in the classroom. But we also can't forget about what residents have been complaining about the violence in schools. So of course, school resource officers have been, I think, a great resource, but we want to also make sure that we're not over utilizing our police department and making sure that we're bringing in those social workers so that the students who need those wraparound services can get the supports that they need. Finally, I think, and this is something that I have observed myself in terms of just like diversity, inclusion, and equity, there aren't as many male teachers in the classrooms thus far. So I think we really need to do something to really recruit males back into the classroom, because that's important, primarily for those students who may not have a male figure at home. Having a male, a positive male figure in your life is something that's extremely important during the adolescent phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. And we will now move to the question four, and we'll start with you, Ms. Francis, for question four. What would be your plan to address violence and crime in the county?
Oh, I am so glad you asked that question, because public safety is one of my passions. So there are a couple of things that we need to do. Violent crime and property crime has gone up. We have to ensure that we are addressing the root causes of crime in the research and public policy space. We call that criminogenic risk factors. That's ensuring that people have access to the resources and supports that they need to be successful so that they don't choose a life of crime out of dire need. We need to make sure that mental health is extremely important. Having access to the agencies and supports that are necessary so people who are suffering from serious mental illness can get the help that they need, because there tends to be an overutilization of police calls for people who are dealing with a serious mental illness. And I'm so glad that state passed that crisis response policy. I saw the crisis response team in Baltimore County at the Perry Hall Festival last weekend, so really, really glad to see that happening in the county. But I also think we need to focus on reentry. I run a reentry program out of Georgetown University, where I work with people who are returning home after a period of incarceration, helping them become entrepreneurs, because it is extremely difficult to get a job with a criminal record. It's extremely difficult to find a place to live in a really good community with a criminal record. So we need to make sure that people who are coming home after a period of incarceration have the resources they need to be positive, productive members of society so that we can break the cycle of incarceration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, what would be your plan to address violence and crime in the county?
Safety first. Like I said so many times, you can't do nothing if there's no safety. My issue, my plan to address violent crime in the county is twofold. First, we got to get our officers out the cars. Our officers need, and they ask for permanent postcards. When I was a police officer, I had a permanent postcard, and I would get out, and I would know my residence, and I would know my block and area, and I would know what was going on there. When we get officers out the car, and they interact with our youth, and that youth-first interaction is not with handcuffs, that makes the world of difference. In my introduction, I stated, you know, my coach, who was a state trooper, took me on a ride along, and I think I'm doing pretty well for myself now. Second part of it is, police officers need to feel like they have the backing of their command. And if they don't have the backing of their command, they kind of get apprehensive. They don't want to get out the car, and they don't want to meet people where they are. The second part of it is, PALS centers. Middle River does not have a PALS center. I don't think there's one actually within my district. There used to be one, but it kind of closed down in Essex. So how do we get funding for PALS centers? How do we get funding to show these kids that there are different ways? At my church, a long time ago, I ran a program that was called MOB,
30 seconds.
where we would take these kids, and we would do interviews of them, mock interviews. We would pair them up with a mentor, who would then show them what to do. I believe it all starts at home first and with policies. So we need to make sure policies are in place, and I do get that mental health plays a part in it. And another thing would be to add a mobile crisis unit to every single precinct within Baltimore County, not just one unit covering a couple of different districts. Thank you.
Thank you both for those thoughtful comments. We will stay with Mr. Johnson. How will you work to support transparency and community trust in managing the Police Accountability Board? What guidelines would you use to select members of the Police Accountability Board?
This one was a tough one for me, being a former police officer, and my wife being a police officer. So I get it. Most police officers don't like this. As of July 1st, they lose their protections. But at the end of the day, we work for our communities in those positions. My guideline is that a community member should be on that board, absolutely. And I do agree that the person should not have a criminal record, because that kind of creates a bias. It's the same like when you select a jury pool. The Police Accountability Board is necessary, is definitely needed, and I need to do a little bit more research on it, but those are just my general comments about that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Francis?
Yes, so I am a community member for that Baltimore County Equitable Policing Work Group and was a part of the process to help develop the strategy for improving accountability and also community and police engagement. I think that in order to have an effective Police Accountability Board, we need to make sure that that board can do what has the teeth to do, what it needs to do, to really ensure that people who are not being good public servants or adhering to the public trust, which they swore to do, you know, are held accountable, just like any other public servant. I think it's important that there is diversity on the board, that there are women represented, that there are people from different socioeconomic backgrounds. I have a different opinion about someone having a criminal record, because I do work in the reentry space and believe that if someone has paid their debt to society and has served their time and proven that they have been rehabilitated and have a certificate of rehabilitation they can demonstrate, that I think that if, I mean, they could be useful on the Police Accountability Board. Also think it's so important that, you know, civilians are allowed to be on the board, but there needs to be a balance. And there needs to be people that have the expertise on what police officers do as well on that board so that they are judging fairly. So I'm really excited to see that Police Accountability Board is there, and really, I think equity and diversity should be the key drivers of selecting the participants on that council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. We'll stick with you for question six. How could the county increase the availability of affordable housing for county residents?
Yes. Oh, great. Another great question. Affordability has been, oh my goodness, especially after, you know, COVID-19 is one of the hot topics. So the county is under an agreement to actually expand or improve affordable housing, I think, believe, by 1,000 units by a certain time, and the county is moving successfully in that direction. But the one thing I think that was reiterated early, we have to make sure that we are preserving open space as well, and we have to make sure that we're not oversaturating certain areas, you know, putting affordable housing units just in one critical area. I think we need to have mixed development, mixed community development, making sure that we're spreading the opportunity around. But we also have to focus on the root cause of affordable housing. It's upskilling our workforce so that they can have a career that will help them achieve the things that they want in life, improving their opportunity index. Housing is really important. I think we need to use best practices. One of the things that I think is working well in California is different kinds of housing units. There's accessory dwelling units that can be held. We also should be being a little more innovative with this and looking at how we can utilize the private housing market. A lot of people who have multiple properties who have moved away, you know, could be figuring, we can figure out a way to how to include them, people who have housing property that they want to run out to make it fall under this affordable housing plan. But affordable housing is important, but we also want to make sure that we're not just building, building, building our way out of the problem. We do have to make sure that we're strategic and keeping the environment in mind while we are tackling affordable housing. Increasing the revenue base of people is going to be extremely difficult to handle.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, how could the county increase the availability of affordable housing for county residents?
A great question. I totally agree with Ms. Francis here on, we don't want to oversaturate just one area, because then it kind of turns into, hey, this is a development of just this right here. We want people to be in all different type areas so that they can grow and that they can see other type things as well. I do think that there should be some type of regulations, some more strict regulations on affordable housing, that we're not just handing people keys to these homes without any type of training back in, like Ms. Francis stated. like Ms. Francis uh stated there. So I could fully agree with her response on that. I do think, like I said, regulations. Um, where I grew up at, there was a ton of affordable housing. And I could say that it was almost like a war zone when I grew up, without regulations, where you had unauthorized people living in there. So I do think the county needs to do some type of study to see how many mixed units you get put in each area, not just the Middle River. But how do we spread that thousand out to the whole entire seven districts uh of the county or the county in a whole? And I mean, Crystal, you honestly hit it on the air there, honestly. I I gotta agree with what you said there.
Well, it's always nice to have agreement and not to have discourse. So thank you very much. Uh, we will stay with you, Mr. Johnson, here as I move to the next question, number seven. Um, in Baltimore County, a number of communities currently face food deserts as well as thousands of residents who face food insecurity. How will you work to resolve this problem?
Great question. In my current job, I wo- I work for a local grocery store brand where I cover sixty-three stores in four different states. And I could say that this company is driven to uh locating food deserts and seeing the things that they could do to help. So having that inside track on how grocery stores operate, how they management, the type of developments that they look for and the populations that they look for, I'll have an inside track on that. Uh, simply put, where I live at, you you can't get to a grocery store if you don't drive. And if you are walking, it's gonna be a long walk. And I could just imagine, you know, walking with some kids or you trying to carry all the groceries back by yourself. Residents need access to food. So maybe in the meantime, before there is a new grocery store brought up, what about our local food banks? Our local, we could depend on our local churches. A bunch of our churches here have uh food giveaways on like Fridays and other nights. So leaning on those resources. Also, what are we gonna do to attract more groceries to the area? Uh, in conjunction with making sure we have spaces for parks. It's kinda like the affordable housing. We can't just build grocery stores and take up all this land and, you know, there's nothing left. So how how can we partner with our local grocery stores to bring people in? Because there's plenty of space for it. Thank you.
Ms. Francis?
Yes, thank you. Um, very important question. Um, so I think we need to um localize access to nutritious food. And one of the things that um can be done to supplement in areas that don't have uh big grocery stores is find a way to bring the grocery stores to the people. Um, I live near Richardson's Farm, not too far from Richardson's Farm. It's a great place to uh grab groceries. There, and cities have been doing this all across uh the United States where they're bringing the farmers' markets closer to the neighborhoods so that people who have to walk really far to the grocery store can still have access to the food. Um, I agree, it's not, and and over here off of forty-three, it's not the safest. You're gonna run out of sidewalk at some point. Um, so we really need to, when we're developing our communities and we're um planning our communities, uh, we need to figure out how to make our communities more bikeable and walkable so that people don't have to drive significantly far to get to a grocery store. We do also have to do, like Mr. Johnson said, understand why and how grocery stores are attracted. One of the thing is the population size and the aggregate um median income. A lot of communities, um, I mean, over in Turner Station area, they, you know, were experiencing this where um they weren't satisfied with the type of grocery stores that were coming in. They weren't getting access to the Wegmans and the Giants and the Shoppers. So we have to figure out a way to attract those kinds of grocery stores. But we have to also make sure that our sho- shopping centers aren't becoming vacant um plots of land as we see all across Baltimore County, but specifically on the east side.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Johnson? No, uh, Ms. Ms. Francis, I'm gonna ask the next question with you. I'll stay with you. Um, there has already been one major recent ransomware attack on a county department. How do you propose preventing future attacks? How would you help protect residents' confidential information from a ransomware attack on a county department?
Yeah, great question. It was, I remember when that happened. It was actually, they had a, what's called, uh, putting on my Homeland Security hat here, a denial of service attack. And so what people don't really understand is when your employees are very educated on um how to um recognize what kind of spam, phishing and uh things come into the email, a lot of those attacks are initiated um through phishing. Um, on the federal level, the federal government has done a really great job of educating employees that work and use a computer and receive emails on how to identify phishing um and spam attempts. Um, so I believe that we need to ensure that the school system is hiring the uh technology expertise to make sure that they can stand up some infrastructure to prevent that from happening again. And if they can't, um, if the school, you know, if the superintendent doesn't think it's uh best to hire that as an in-house, which I I would, at the central office, then contracting out to um a company that has experience in um protecting because personally identifiable information is something that is so important. Um, and we have to also make sure, in in the same token, um, identity theft is really running rampant in this day and age. Um, so we have to make sure that not, we're not only educating our school members who, and employees that are working in the school system about how to prevent ransomware attacks and how to uh recognize phishing, but also making sure we're trickling down that same information to our residents who may be getting same kind of types of uh uh emails or attacks happening in their own personal inboxes.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Mr. Johnson?
Absolutely. Um, not just with the school system. I think it should be something that's done countywide. Uh, so many of our agencies have so much of our personal information that some agencies might have and you may not even know they have it. So unfortunately, the world, United States, every week it seems like somebody has been hacked, some type of ransomware attack has taken place. So with that, there's also plenty of examples of what not to do and good contractors and good companies that we should be reaching out to to say, hey, what's good, what's bad? How can we partner with your company, contract, whatever, to stop that? The second part of it is training knowledge and experience. Every month, do some type of training on this stuff because this stuff is so critical. If somebody gets your social security number, your address, they basically got you. And that's what we don't want. I do agree with Ms. Francis on, you know, getting stuff out there to the uh residents as well because it's critical, because our employees are our residents as well. So you kinda get the two bird or one stone effect there. I believe that there should be some type of in-house fail-safe system that goes on. I remember working for a company where they would send phishing emails to us on purpose just to see who opened it and then you would get a write-up for it. So what type of strict regulations do we have to teach our employees, no, you can't do that? Because one simple mistake could literally lead to fifty thousand people's information being exposed on the black market and now is out there. And that's one thing that we don't want.
Thank you for your responses. Um, I do have an um a question here for you now. I'll stay with Mr. Johnson. How is climate change impacting the county and what can the council do to address these effects?
We're going green. Um, I I met with the Sierra Club and although they didn't endorse me, I still totally support all of their initiatives. Uh, the county should be going electric. I think it's by twenty-twenty-six. So get no solar panels, all electric equipment. So as far as cutting grass, vehicles, things like that, planting trees. I like trees. Uh, me and my daughters go down to uh gunpowder. Well, not now because it's a little bit busy summertime. So we like to walk with the peace and quiet out there. But it's just something about nature that is just so beautiful that we have to protect it at all costs. Uh, making, I was up in New York two days ago. Every single grocery store that has a bottle dispenser, they also have to have a recycling center inside of that. And the people actually could get paid money. It's like five cent per bottle. But just something that makes people get active. How do we make green fun? So I plan to partner with the Sierra Club much, much more. You know, if I'm blessed by this opportunity to become the next councilman. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Francis.
Yes, climate is so important. I think we need to invest in renewable energy. We also have to watch the rise in our waters. Uh, of course, here, as uh Mr. Johnson said, on this side of the county, we have lots of waterways. So we have to make sure that residents who live near those areas, houses and infrastructure are protected, that we are doing what we can to educate um our residents on what they can do to do their fair share. Um, the, as he stated before, the county has implemented a plan um to go electric. I think we need to make sure that for people, uh constituents, residents, businesses, that we watch our usage um and our waste. Um, I think we can do a better job of making sure that recycling is offered at our county uh parks so that people have an option and not just throw everything in the trash. Um, I really loved um the um rainwater barrel uh workshop that happened in uh the area about, was it last week? Where residents learned how to preserve rainwater and use it to water their gardens. So I do think that we need to do a better job of just, again, educating our citizens on how they can do their part, businesses on how they can do their part because it really takes all of us working together. We really have to work on our consumption, our um carbon, reducing our carbon footprint. And we also have to watch the built environment because how we are building and the materials that we use are using also play into um the impact on climate.
Thank you. And we'll stay with you, Ms. Francis. What are your views on redistricting and increasing the number of members on the county council to serve the continuing growth of a diverse population of Baltimore County?
Really important question. So in order to um have world-class constituent service, we have to make sure that the size of our council districts are um manageable. Right now, we have um but over a hundred and twenty-seven thousand um residents per district. We have seven council uh districts and um the geographical area is pretty large. And so sometimes it's very difficult for one council member to be able to even manage all of the types of requests that come in. Um, the redistricting process, and so I wanna um tilt my head to the leading women voters and NAACP for being at the forefront of the fair maps because it's extremely important. But all, what also is extremely important to make sure that there is space for diversity and inclusion is to ensure that there is an expansion of the council. I do support uh the the expansion, the petition that's actually going around to get that question on the ballot for uh the voters to vote on. I fully support it. Um, you know, the county, current county council, um, you know, what was not for it, because I've been watching the lead, lots of uh lead of women voters debates and some council members that's saying that they are for two, are now for two because they see how much of the support from the residents uh that want the for. And so really what it is, if we wanna be honest, and I'm always gonna be about um transparency and honesty, some people don't wanna give up their power. That's how it's been communicated. We, the pop, the the citizens should have the power. The citizens should be able to decide. And if people who are watching now um wanna support that petition, they should go onto the website, vote for more and sign the petition.
Thank you, Ms. Francis. Mr. Johnson, your thoughts?
Um, when I first jumped into this race, I talked to a city, a sitting council person. And they told me, do you plan on keeping your full-time job because this is considered part-time? It blew my mind. Um, I totally support the redistricting. We, a hundred and twenty thousand people for one person, one office, it's honestly just not feasible. We're doing more harm to our citizens than we are helping them. It's impossible. Uh, it's possible, but it's impossible to serve all of the needs of your people that way. Why not welcome in four more council seats? It it it's totally needed. I agree with the uh petition as well, as Crystal stated. The, that's a stopgap for me. I totally support it.
Thank you very much. Staying with you, Mr. Johnson. How do you propose to improve the services for older adults in the county?
Great question. Uh, I have a grandmother that lives in Parkville and she could do for herself for the most part. But our babies and our elderly are some of the most vulnerable people in our society. So they need access to services such as helping with, you know, that food desert issue that we talked about because our older adults need to eat as well. And I can't tell you how many times I've seen some older adults out there walking and things like that. They also need resources. They need resources in a sense of, you know, the Department of Aging. How can they make, how can we make their job easier for them to serve our elderly people? Elderly people are the subject of a bunch of scams as well. A bunch of people door knocking and next thing you know, they're in their house and they're robbing them and they're stealing money, credit card information, things like that. And it's just not right. Also, I would like to implement some type of service with the police department, local precincts, that says, hey, my name is Jane Doe. I'm an elderly person. I live alone. So how can we do spot checks on our elderly people in that sense as well? Other than that, I would have to do some more research on some things, I'm gonna be honest, to see what our type of services we can offer to our elderly community.
Thank you. Ms. Francis?
Yes, so accessibility, the digital divide. Um, so one of the things I uh would like to see happen is um figuring out a way to do, and I've actually done this, it um is uh what's called reverse mentorship, where there is a program to stand up with a younger individual is partnered with one of our seniors to help them overcome the digital divide. Um, that, almost everything, access to everything, whether it's your your county services, everything is now online. And um just really access, if it's only online, um prevents, you know, provides a barrier. Uh, that's just the first thing. Um, the second thing I think is so important is making sure that we can leverage um the senior population um to keep them engaged, um community vitality, making sure there are ways for our seniors to plug in. They've been around. Um, my aunt, my great aunt actually, um, is really big with uh historic preservation. And a lot of our uh young people, I'm a millennial, coming up, really don't know a a lot about their own family history, a a lot about where they come from and just making sure that we're utilizing that knowledge and preserving that history that some of our older residents um, you know, carry with them. I think it is so important, and that's why I think uh that that transportation is also important because a lot of our seniors, um, those who still can't do for themselves, drive them around is so important. I was a part of the ride to the polls effort and most of the people that I rode to the polls were our seniors. So that's something I took pride and joy doing. Um, the last thing that I think is uh really, really important is just making sure that we have um a a safe slate, safe space for our seniors because elder abuse is also very important. Um, I had, working at the Social Security Administration, we received lots of calls about uh, you know, people taking advantage of our seniors, taking their benefits. So just making sure that there is an advocacy um space for them to really report um crimes on, against elders.
Thank you. And uh, and I'll stay with you, Ms. Francis. What are your main concerns for public health services in Baltimore County? How should these concerns be addressed?
Yes, so public health services. Um, one of the things, uh, I mentioned it a little bit earlier, probably go a little bit deeper, is um support for serious mental illness. Um, a lot of uh, a large part of our homeless population suffers from serious mental illness. Um, what I think was done um great on the state level for reentry that could be utilized in this space are what we call community navigators, where they're connecting people who need access to the resource to the supports they need because simple things can be very overwhelming when you don't have access to um strong quality continuing care and making sure that people who are um just battling with serious mental illness can get the help that they need, but they're also, don't feel like they're alone, that they can call someone. Because nowadays, when you pick up the phone and try to call one of the agencies, you don't really get anyone. You get a voicemail or you get, you know, you don't, you get a uh recorded message that tells you, um, they'll call you back when you're next in line. And sometimes people don't get those phone calls back. Um, so I really feel like we need to improve our infrastructure. Um, so I really feel like we need to improve our infrastructure. Um, we need to make sure that there, again, we localize the access to the resources so that people don't have to really travel far to get the support that they need. They would actually bring those resources to the communities and to the people that need them. And we saw that it was very successful during the COVID-19 pandemic, because that's exactly what happened. County agencies started to localize their resources and bring it directly to the communities in need.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, your turn.
Yes, thank you. Uh, public health services is something that is critical, is something that's viable and something that's needed for our community. When I think about public health services overall, I think about homelessness. I think about addiction. Uh, as somebody who was homeless at one point, you know, my mom used to take us to the hospital and fake an injury just so we could sleep in the lobby overnight. I believe that homeless people need resources. I think that the resources should be in a form of shelters. It should be in a form of social workers. It should be somebody there to help our local homeless get down to the bare root of it. Uh, I remember when I worked at East Point Mall, there was a whole entire homeless camp behind there. And our police officers, our social workers, they know exactly where these places are. Sometimes you have to meet people where they are and not necessarily where they're going to be in order to help them. Secondly, some homelessness also comes with some addiction as well. Um, addiction is thriving in our communities. Uh, you know, so more safe sites for people to dump their needles and their paraphernalia and things like that. With my mom business, I get to see this up close every day. Addiction is truly a disease. I don't believe that it's a choice. These people need the proper resources. What are we doing as a county to meet these people where they are? I wholeheartedly believe that some people needs tomorrow, today. They need access. They need people that will cheer them on and people that won't look down on them. I'm willing to go down to the trenches and meet these people and help raise a hand and provide them with access to things that's um, prevalent. Also with homelessness, there's also a sense of mental illness that comes with it as well. It's like, you know, you knock me down once, I'm homeless. Now I'm addicted and, you know, I have mental illness.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, we have um, another question. We'll start with you, sir. How would you work to increase the availability of jobs with a living wage?
Can you say the last part again?
How would you work to increase the availability of jobs with a living wage?
Absolutely. Um, been in retail now in the past, I'm an age myself, ten, twelve years, although I'm still young. It's about, one, working with partnerships. If this job says, hey, we require X, Y, Z from this person. Who's to say we, why can't we get kids in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old? Get them in some type of program, some mentorship, some type of internships, where they start learning these skills at an early age. So by the time they do come out of high school, if they don't want to go to school, uh, well, college, that they could have a trade. I do believe that the county should have some trade schools on its side of town. I went to Merwell in Baltimore City, where my trades were barbering and welding. I don't use the welding anymore, but I, I might cut some hair every so often. So how do we get our kids access to the requirements that's needed now? So by the time they do hit that workforce, and then how do you partner with the workforce? Um, you see it all over. Jobs now, I mean, businesses now, you know, self-checkouts. So you could go in a business and they'll have twenty self-checkouts and one person working. So we need to make sure that our kids are prepared and that they're valuable and that they have the education, the tools, the requirements for when they do hit that workforce. They're not starting at, you know, their minimum wage. They're starting on a living wage. The more people that we get in living wage, the more people that we get making more money with a living wage, then we also can start to kind of reduce some of that affordable housing. I believe some of those things will hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Francis, you have the last word on this question?
Yes. So I will say skills pays the bills. So I um, am a product of Solars Point Southeastern Vocational Technical High School. I went half-day at Dundalk and the other half-day I was at Solars Point. Um, learning about computer-integrated manufacturing. I graduated with a certification in Cisco Systems Networking. So my first job out of high school, I was making significantly more than others uh, because I had the skills that helped pay the bills, which was really important. Because my mom was a disabled army vet, and even though I was young, I was actually a breadwinner in my household. And so it's so important, like Mr. Johnson said, that we have those partnerships. But I, I think we should take it a step further. Industry partnerships. Um, if you look at Amazon, you look at Google, you look at um, some of the largest players in industry. They determine where their headquarters are going to be located based off of the skillset of the population. And while we have a significant um, opportunity here to invest in renewable green energy, we should start building the infrastructure to establish industry partnerships. When I was in high school, I had to get what was called service learning hours in order to graduate. I think we should ensure that that continues to happen, go, go back to that model. Um, and because when I graduated, I had something to put on my resume. And so my first job was not McDonald's. I, I had, my first job was actually in the office of recycling. Um, and so it was really, really um, important for me to have that access. But also think we need to invest in continuing education. While everyone may not decide to go to college, there are some specialized uh, fields that require hot, you know, education beyond high school. And I think we need to prepare our students today to be able to uh, get jobs for tomorrow.
Thank you both for those, those responses. Uh, I have one more. I'll stay with you, Ms. Francis. How would you propose to improve water and sewer services in Baltimore County?
Yes. Um, so I believe there is actually um, it was like a consent decree or something from the EPA that, you know, the county has, is, is under to update their water and sewer infrastructure. I think the problem is we're so reactive. We have to be a little more proactive and making sure that we invest in the technology necessary to make sure we're monitoring the health of uh, the systems and, and the infrastructure that's maintained in the water. Also, I was extremely disappointed about the um, discharge that happened over there at the uh, sanitation plant over there near Dundalk, where uh, residents were filming on their YouTube Live raw sewage floating in um, our waterways. Um, and we understand that we are in a partnership with Baltimore City, who actually is responsible for uh, managing um, our water treatment. But making sure that while they may be at the forefront of managing that, we shouldn't be figuring out or finding out information on the backend. So there should be, if it is a partnership and a collaboration, we should be making sure that there's a open exchange of information that's happening. Um, and that we are really determining uh, what's happening, I guess, regionally as well. Um, to make sure that we're not, we're staying on top of companies and, and um, dumping into our, our water streams. So I, I believe that we need to invest in a really good plan for accountability when our water is not protected. Um, we saw what happened in Flint uh, when, when people um, are not really engaged in aware of what's going on. So we definitely don't want to ever see that kind of tragedy happening here in the county. And that means we need to be paying attention to our infrastructure and have the technology to understand the ramifications of the health of our water. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, how would you propose to improve water and sewer services in Baltimore County?
First, I will want to take a look at our local DPW. Um, I agree with everything Ms. Francis said there oversight. But one thing that hurt these companies is their pockets. If you start instituting fines and fees and they don't want to shake our hands at the table, they don't want to share information, like she said, we get it on the backend. We should start hurting their pocketbooks, their wallets. Because that's sometime the only way that you could get these companies, these divisions to operate. I do believe that regulations should be stricter. Especially considering with, you know, like she said on a YouTube video there. And I, I've seen some of those videos and it's just horrible. Um, if you have a ride through Dundalk, you know, going around six ninety-five, you, you gotta roll your car windows up. And sometimes it even comes through the car windows and you still could smell it. And I just think that's a tragedy within itself there. So just stricter regulations, hurt their pockets, but they're not sharing information. We need to put our foot down with this.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We're going to move to a transportation issue now, and we'll start with Mr. Johnson. How would you improve public transportation in Baltimore County?
Uh, I would partner with my local delegation, our uh, and the people down in Annapolis to make sure we get more bus service routes out here towards Middle River area, towards um, the, the buses out here, you, you don't see too many of them. I think the cutoff is basically, it goes around as far up towards White Marsh Mall, but kind of coming through Middle River, you don't see any buses. That kind of leads back to, you know, it helps create food deserts. It helped create uh, lack of access for kids to get places, their parents to get places. Sometimes they have to walk forty minutes to get to the local bus stop. Uh, where I live at off of Campbell Boulevard, the closest bus stop is where they just built the new tractor supply of Philadelphia Road. And if you're walking it, that takes about forty minutes just to get to it. Uh, my father-in-law had to do it one day. Sorry to him, I was sleeping, didn't hear him call me on the phone, but transportation is so critical. And we need to partner with our state people. And I do agree with that circulator. I think it would be awesome to have like a middle reverberator circulator around here. Like you even perhaps get dropped off at gunpowder and go to the beach for the day or I, so that's something that I would really like to push for.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Francis, what gave you this opportunity?
Yes, uh, we should be receiving some funding from the federal government to help improve with that Build Back Better uh, infrastructure. And so hopefully, that money that goes to the state and then trickles down to the county is invested. Um, I do believe in the power of collaborating with our uh, delegation in Annapolis is so important. Um, I work in DC and, and what's efficient, it, it's not efficient for me to take public transportation, because I would um, have to drive to Martin State Airport, catch the train to DC, but the train, the last train leaves uh, Union Station to get me back at three twenty, I don't get off of work until five thirty. So it's not efficient. So we have to improve the efficiency of our public transit system so that people actually want to use it. Um, again, the bus routes are just non-existent in certain areas. So we need to improve that. We need to improve, not only that, we also have to reduce, if we're focusing on reducing our carbon footprint, that means we have to reduce um, how many people are deciding to put gas cars on the road. And transportation is important, so we have to have other means to get there. So expanding our bikeable infrastructure. Um, again, in places where there are, where communities that are closer and that have the walkability to places, they don't have the bike infrastructure. Um, DC and Towson um, are, are, are great. But making sure that the biking in, infrastructure makes sense, because there are some um, concerns from community members in Towson that some of the bike lanes are just really, really dangerous, highly congested roads. So again, people don't typically want to bike in large numbers because it's not safe. So we have to be smart with um, transportation. We have to invest in expansion, but making sure that is effective and efficient while doing so.
Thank you. And I've lost track. Mr. Johnson, did you answer on this question? Yes, okay. Um, so I will stay with Ms. Francis then. I have one more. Uh, a little bit, what are Baltimore County's most critical infrastructure needs, in your opinion?
Yeah, that's a really uh, packed question. So we, so voters are concerned about the, the school infrastructure. Now, we know with the blueprint for Maryland's future, more funding is going to be coming down, which will free um, free up funding to be able to invest in school infrastructure. Um, there's also complaints about the congestion in the roads here. Again, you know, with the repaving of the roads, um, installing, you know, the traffic circles. Some people don't agree with the traffic circles. They want the, they want, they prefer the traffic lights. Um, a way to calm down the traffic. But one thing which is unique to this side of the county, we need more sidewalks. We really need more sidewalks on this side of the county, because um, as Mr. Johnson said, everyone doesn't have a car. And we are, um, you know, it, it, there are dense, denser parts to the District Five, but there are also some parts that are a little more rural, like when you're going down to Chase. Um, in Bowley's Quarter area, um, Oliver Beach, we need, if people are close to a, you know, Royal Farms or to Richardson's Farm, I'll use right off of Ebenezer Road. There are some homes that could potentially walk to Richardson's Farm, but they probably get ran over in the process because there are no sidewalks. So that is one thing that I would, would definitely prioritize on this side of the county, in addition to figuring out ways to calm that traffic. Because we really have to figure out a way. It's, it gets really congested over here because there's been so much development. We have to really focus on traffic calming um, sidewalks and um, making sure that we're not forgetting our schools, because residents want new schools over here. So.
Mr. Johnson, um, what do you see as Baltimore County's most critical infrastructure needs?
Simply put, schools. Um, like Ms. Francis said, everywhere I go, every voter that I talk to, it's schools, schools, schools. I believe that we should invest in our schools. So I have one of my neighbors, same block, one goes to Prairie Hall and the other one, and another neighbor down the street, their kids go to Kenwood. And I just think that's crazy. Our kids should be able to have that unity, that, hey, we're from the same neighborhood, we kind of grew up together, instead of separating them. So our school system is number one for me. Safety in schools. Without schools being built and you keep building everything else around it, you're losing the core of who you are. At some point, we got to stop trying to appease to corporations and other people and right, take it right back to our community, because at the end of the day, that's exactly who we're doing, all doing this for, is our community. So, schools.
Thank you. So thank you both for your very thoughtful comments. We are out of time now for the formal question and answer portion of the program. And we'll move to the candidates' closing statements. Uh, Nick Johnson will make the first statement, followed by Crystal Francis.
Absolutely. Once again, I just wanted to say thank you to the League of Women Voters, the NAACP, NAACP. Ms. Francis as well, thank you for being here. I'll close on this. Part of my campaign slogan is nothing beats right now, and if not now, then when. Our residents have been through a lot in the past two, three years of the COVID-19 pandemic. And it's time for new change and it's time for new leadership. I believe, and I'll even go as far as to say, whether I win or Ms. Francis wins, I believe that us two are the best candidates for this District Five seat. Putting in the work, I have the background, I have the education, I have the tenacity, and I have the built for this moment, in this moment type attitude. I'm not connected to any type of political pacts, any type of higher-ups. I'm independent thinking and I'm really doing this for the citizens. And I thank everybody for joining. I appreciate it. And once again, thanks, Ms. Francis, Legal Women Voter and NAACP.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Francis?
Yes, um, first I want to echo the same. Thanks to Legal Women Voters, NAACP and Mr. Johnson. Um, like we said, we are playing a different game. We're not doing dirty politics. Um, you have two strong candidates here. Um, I, you know, am asking for the support of District Five, because I believe in equity, diversity and inclusion. And we really need to make sure that women are represented. Like I said before, women make up fifty-three percent of the constituent base. And it would be a real shame that, you know, we're, we're at risk of not having any women on the council. Um, the two other women in the other districts, uh, you know, are working hard. And so I am the third woman over here in this district working hard. So um, again, please connect with me on my website. I have more information about the solutions. But I really believe we need to start electing leaders that are really going to um, continue to do the hard work. Not just make um, a bunch of campaign promises and develop a bunch of plans, but actually have a strategy to execute those plans. And um, a process to really implement and fund the implementation of the solutions. Um, again, with me, you're going to get somebody that has uh, over fourteen years of experience doing policy work. Um, I, as I mentioned before, I studied it, I researched it, I got a PhD in it, I care about it that much. Um, even though I am not on the council, I've worked alongside the county council. I've been called upon to test the to to provide um resources um to help, you know, advocate for or against a certain policy. And so you're going to get somebody that has the experience, um, that wouldn't necessarily need to learn on the job because I do have the experience. And like I said, whoever you vote for, um, trust and believe that uh I will do my best to uphold um, all of the values that I believe as a woman of faith to really uh, uh, love the community and let that shine. That I do. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, thank you, audience members, for your questions and participating in tonight's program. Thank you to our candidates for participating in the forum and serving as an example of civil discourse. You have given Baltimore County residents a great deal to think about as we vote in July. I'd also like to thank our forum committee for arranging this event. And the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and NAACP of Randallstown for co-sponsoring the forum. In the next few weeks, recordings of this forum will be available on the League's website and on the vote four one one dot org site. Primary election day is July nineteenth. Early voting begins on July seventh and all voting ends on July nineteenth at nine PM. Vote four one one dot org is the League of Women Voters' free online voter's guide. It's your one-stop shopping site for everything about your local ballot, candidate positions in their own words, polling places and more. Hard copies of League of Women Voters' guides will be available soon at branches of the Baltimore County Public Library, senior centers, Head Start Centers and college campuses. We hope that you will consider joining or donating to the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randallstown NAACP to support our work. Thank you again for coming and good night.